Welcome to the Committee of the Hole Meeting. The Cape Coral City Council today is April 26, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is you, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long requested to be excused and will mark himself. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinkie?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven Preston and one excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to get consensus to move item under Business Item Four, the Water Conservation Ordinance, up to number one. We have a couple of speakers here that have meetings a little bit later and to avoid any conflicts with them. I would like to have consensus to move that discussion up to the top.
Okay, any council have any problem with that, moving that particular topic up to the first discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, item four A is citizens' input time. Citizens' input, maximum of 60 minutes. And it's set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll use the podium to my left, your right.
Good morning. Eileen Benazia, I'm a resident of Cape Coral. I've spoken to the Committee of the Hole before regarding the planned development now called Red Fish Point. This development was already destined to be an ecological disaster for the plants and animals living in the area, as well as the residences surrounding the property. Now, with the new amendment to previously submitted plans, the owners and developers wish to emulate Tarpon Point and have a new district approved for the land. This district called Red Fish Point Mixed-Use Preserve Future Land Use District is aiming to provide a template for future development. This would include waterfront restaurants, bike and canoe rentals, water taxi, nature trails, a marina, public parking right behind houses on Southwest First Court, and a public beach. All of the above requires destruction of surrounding mangroves. These are the same mangroves that protected the entire area during the recent hurricane. How does this fit in with the city's comprehensive code to protect vulnerable coastal ecological communities? My house was flooded, as was many of my neighbors. Who knows how much worse it would have been without this protection? And now it's proposed there is development of the land and destruction of the trees. Who plans this after a hurricane we just went through? I hope this plan and the other, any other development plan is not allowed by the city. This property should be acquired by the city or Lee County's 2020 Plan and protected for all time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input?
My name's Scott King. I'm here to talk about the irrigation ordinance that we're going to be looking at today. The most economical cost of a gallon of water is one that's conserved. We waste half of every gallon we use for landscape irrigation. Some nights, that can add up to 25 million gallons of water waste. Six years ago, Mr. Pearson and I met to begin the process of creating this irrigation ordinance as it sits today. This ordinance provides the guidelines and direction to provide efficient irrigation systems and practices for new property development, along with approximately 60,000 existing systems that have the opportunity to be improved and become water-efficient in time or on an as-needed basis. We can't keep emptying our canals and justify the expense for importing water for utility that we mandated to our stakeholders without any effort to use our existing water supply wisely. We're 30 years late in bringing this ordinance to where it is today. We also cannot keep draining our aquifer while the northern side of our city is waiting for the utility project to be completed. This ordinance will supply two homes with the same amount of water that currently supplies one. Because we chose to offer our treated wastewater product for a flat fee, there's been no incentive financially to conserve water. In lieu of a pay-as-you-use utility, this ordinance becomes critical when trying to offset a financial burden that has no ceiling for our city. The more water we waste, the more it costs to produce more that we need for the promise that we kept to supply this utility to people that were mandated to buy it. We're unique with our canal system. It's our city slogan, a waterfront wonderland. But we're also burdened with the stewardship that is required to manage the water supply. We've been abusing the canal system for 30 years. We need to move this ordinance forward. The ordinance is constructed to give city flexibility while educating the public and implementing the changes, while allowing stakeholders multiple options on how they choose to comply. I want to thank city staff and all the members of the committee that volunteered their time to put this ordinance together, and I hope we can move it forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. See a nun, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, see a nun, we'll move on to the item four B discussion. The first item we've moved up, the Water Conservation Ordinance. I'll turn it over to, I guess, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. This morning, we're going to talk about the new proposed Water Conservation Ordinance. City staff, Mr. King was saying city staff have been diligently working with irrigation industry professionals, engineers, and the Cape Coral construction industry for some time now to improve the city's existing irrigation-related ordinances. Section 373.228 of Florida statutes recognizes landscape irrigation as a significant source of water use, and it directs local governments to improve landscape irrigation and design standards. In order to reduce nutrient pollution and excessive irrigation water use to protect and preserve precious water resources, updates to the existing ordinances are needed. The draft irrigation ordinance would require that all new residential and commercial irrigation systems and modifications of $2,500 or more to existing systems meet the new standards. It is the intent and purpose of this article to provide a means to alleviate the inefficient use of water resources by improving the long-term sustainability of limited water resources and to curtail wasteful water use practices. The proposed ordinance is designed to increase irrigation efficiency, irrigation system sustainability, and limit harmful nutrient runoff that can contribute to poor water quality and quantity in the city's fresh and saltwater canals. The proposed changes, if adopted in the future, would not go into effect until 18 months after adoption by city council. I have a PowerPoint here that I'd like to go through with you real quickly. First of all, on this slide, this actually comes, this is not Jeff Pearson who made this slide. This actually comes from the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. They say that as much as 50% of all the water used for irrigation is wasted due to a number of reasons such as evaporation, wind, sunlight, runoff, and those, that's can be caused by inefficient irrigation methods and systems. In evaluating water use applications from public water suppliers, water management districts shall consider whether a local government has adopted ordinances for landscaping and irrigation systems. At a minimum, the city will require 54 additional drinking water wells for build-out. Some of the key changes in this article, in this Article, Article VII, will apply to new residential and commercial automatic irrigation systems operated either automatically or manually and to substantial modification of existing systems where it is, it equals or is greater than $2,500. It does not require existing irrigation systems to be altered or modified to meet the new design standards. Also, new or modified irrigation systems will continue to be inspected by the Department Development Services Department. More key changes, chemical injection systems must comply with the city's fertilizer ordinance. As-built drawings will be required for irrigation systems, whereas residential systems may be hand-drawn as long as they're to scale. Final testing will be required to ensure correct operations for our new irrigation customers when they get a new system. It also requires installers to provide property owner as-built drawings and maintenance checklists. The program will be voluntary for the first 18 months before full implementation. So just to give you an idea, if this gets adopted, say by June, it would be the beginning of 2025 before it would go 100% into effect. New or retrofitted irrigation systems with soil sensors and smart controllers can apply for a variance. Basically, what this means is that these systems will only turn on and irrigate landscaping lawns when it needs water. So we will keep a database that all the code enforcement officers will have. So basically, if you, you put in a new system or a retrofitted system that meets these new design standards that has the soil sensors and smart controls, you can actually apply for that variance, and you will most likely never get another watering citation. Provides alternate, alternative compliance. City may approve an alternative compliance plan upon finding that the alternative plan fulfills the purpose and intent of the new ordinance. Systems that are granted a variance for installing smart controllers, soil sensors, again, would not be required to follow our current year-round watering restrictions. City and owners will have as-built drawings to reduce accidental damage during excavation activities, and fertilizer runoff to surface water, we believe, will be reduced. Also, the potential for harmful algal blooms could be reduced, and staff and the CCCIA recommend a $500 irrigation impact fee reduction or rebate for installing smart irrigation systems that also have the soil sensors and, but that will require a, that's not part of this ordinance, and it would require a separate update to City Ordinance, Chapter Two, Section 2-24.3. It reduces future capital expenses through conservation. In our last irrigation master plan, the number one item for meeting the future irrigation requirements is through conservation. And this ordinance helps us get there. It will also reduce aquifer water level decline by private irrigation wells, which we see, are seeing every dry season up in the North Cape where they don't have access to centralized potable drinking water. It provides homeowners peace of mind that that irrigation system that the contractor puts in is efficient and installed properly. The amount of water saved can be 30% or more. I have a number of studies. Water Science Associates did a study, and that was like the bottom of the efficiency scale that they found in their study. Future capital costs for irrigation water supply could decrease with conservation. Again, the CCCIA recommends a $500 impact fee rebate. So if we go back five years, the average number of irrigation system permits was 2,403. If we multiply that by $500 per permit, let's say that continues, it would be approximately $1.2 million. According to the city's rate consultant, alternative water supply costs approximately $3 per gallon. So if you multiply that by our level of service, which is 556 gallons per day, our current level of service, times a 30% water savings, times $3, it adds up to about the same. We're not looking to make money on this ordinance or anything like that. We just, we want to provide an incentive for those folks to actually conserve because some of the, if they were to go back in and retrofit their system, there would be an increased cost. And for new systems, the cost will be a little higher. Community education and support. Staff has workshopped this ordinance for the past few years with industry professionals, including South Florida Water Management District, who we have Phil Flood here representing the district, who was, as soon as I finish the presentation, will get up and speak. And we also have the president of the CCCIA here, Ms. Lynn Boldazar, who will also speak. And we have, what we're going to do, working with the city's Communications Division, is to create a community education element to convey the intent of this new ordinance and promote water conservation. The CCCIA approved this draft ordinance at their member meeting on March 9 of this year. And we're going to strategize to educate and inform the community of the ordinance and its specifications if adopted. Thank you, and now I would like Mr. Phil Flood with the South Florida Water Management District to come up and say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, council members. I just wanted to first commend the Cape for the foresight in moving forward with this irrigation ordinance. I think water conservation is critical in developing a sustainable water supply so that your city can continue to grow and have a prosperous economic future. The city's long been a champion of water conservation. You were one of the first to move to two-day-a-week watering in our region over here, and you've long promoted water conservation as a means to make sure that you have sufficient water supply for your community over here. You also have embraced, have embraced the development of alternative water supplies. And over the last 25 years, the district has been a proud partner with y'all in helping to develop new water sources and helping to expand your reuse system throughout, throughout the community. So this, this ordinance here is going to require the implementation of a smart irrigation technology. And, and what that essentially does is it, it's going to allow the water system to come on only when the landscape needs it. It's not going to be, it's my day of the week, so my timer goes off and we water the yard whether it needs it or not. It's only going to use water when the landscape actually absolutely needs it. And so these systems have proven over time to save money over the conventional timer systems, where you just set it and walk away, and it just, it comes on when it's, when that's your day of the week. So we encourage the, the use of this technology. The district has been promoting it, and we'd like to see it implemented as a way to preserve and protect our water resources that are, that are so limited. I also want to commend your staff for all the outreach that they've done. I know we started working with Jeff and his team many years ago when he started, first started talking about doing this. In the last, over the last year and a half or so, we've been swapping ideas back and forth on how to make this a good ordinance, how to improve it, and how to make sure that it's going to be protecting your resources. And, and so through water conservation and this ordinance over here, I think you're going to not only, going to save water, but in saving that water, it'll help save the city having to go out and develop additional water supply sources over here. So it should certainly be a cost saver for the community, so. So that's about all I had to, just wanted to share with y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Phil. Now I'd like to call up Ms. Lynn Boldazar.
Good morning, council members and mayor. My name is Lynn Boldazar, the Executive Director of the Cape Coral Construction Industry Association. The CCCIA has been working with the city on this ordinance since approximately the third quarter of 2021. The CCCIA recognizes irrigation as a significant source of water use and the need to improve water conservation methods. In its original form, the CCCIA could not support the ordinance due to the number of concerns that would have been detrimental to the construction industry, the homeowners, and the city. The CCCIA expressed that concern in our original position paper last year. After many meetings and discussions, the CCCIA is happy to say that we have come to an agreement with city staff and the stakeholders, and now having an ordinance that makes sense for the construction industry, homeowners, and the city. Jeff's presentation was great. It was very thorough. One thing I wanted to add to it is that plan review times will not increase with this new ordinance. And the CCCIA, the CCCIA would like to thank Jeff Pearson, Councilmember Tom Hayden, and all the stakeholders for working together with the CCCIA on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
So staff is looking for a consensus to move to the next step, which would be to notice a public hearing if council so chooses. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff. The, just a few questions. One, and first, it's, it was important to me, and, and we met early on, right after the election almost, in regard to this as it was moving forward, and water conservation is extremely important to me. It was also important to me to know that CCCIA, you know, was considered as a stakeholder and that they were involved, and I'm glad that they, we've moved this to a point where, where they can support it as well. I do have a few questions as it relates to the implementation of it, and that is, and you may not have an answer to these right now, but just something maybe to make note of.
Okay.
Right now, we have issues, obviously, with an overwhelming number of inspections that are required, you know, clearing permits that we have for a variety of reasons as, as we would make these inspections required on the, on the irrigation systems that would be permitted to put in. Has there been thought of allowing a photo inspection so that there's not a delay in an inspector going out and actually, you know, seeing the underground piping before it gets filled in and, and the, you know, contractor can leave the job, so to speak?
We haven't spoke about that, but that's something that possibly it will be done by Development Services. That's something we can certainly speak with them about. Is there someone here from Development Services? We have Juan Guerra here. Can you speak on that? On the permitting part of, or the inspection side of it, or permitting? If not, I can certainly-
It may not have been considered until now. I would just say, make a note of it. One of the concerns is especially during our rainy season, that, that all we need is a real heavy rain to wash in, you know, those trenches that have been dug for, for all the piping and to cover them up, and now you got to go back and clear it out so it can be properly inspected. So if, if there's a way to do that, to streamline that inspection and to, you know, not have return visits out there, that, I think that would be helpful. The other is having the sensors. Did, is there a thought that there would be some type of registry for which properties have installed that sensor system if they're going to be allowed to water only when that device tells the system it's time to water so that code enforcement going down the street doesn't see that, here's this, you know, home that's sprinkling, and it's not their day? So how does that work?
What we're going to do is develop a database with all of the addresses that have received a variance, and the code enforcement officers would have that database as they're in the field.
Great. And, and I thought of, you know, we talked about incentive to the, to the citizens to conserve water, and, you know, the identification that the flat fee doesn't encourage conservation. And then when I considered the $500 impact fee credit, if you will, how does that, how does that help people with their current irrigation systems if they decide that they would like, you know, to install, you know, a moisture sensor to run their system for them, so to speak? What's their incentive to do that?
What I was, what I would like to do, and of course, this would take another update to Chapter Two, Section 2-24.3, would be, in that program that is to be developed in a separate ordinance for the rebate program, would be if an existing homeowner upgrades to the system, it would be a $500 rebate, whereas a new construction, it would be a credit towards their existing, their future impact fees that they would come in and pay at time of occupancy, certificate of occupancy. So instead of, you know, that would be more of a cash rebate-type program that we would, could institute.
And is the conversion to this, to a moisture sensor system in and around that $500 amount, is it a wash for the customer?
It's hard to say because different yards and configurations and what they want and different type of landscaping, it will vary. But I know I've got Scott King here, who is an irrigation professional and contractor. He might be able to answer that better than I. Scott, do you have any thoughts on that, on the cost difference?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, it's, as we look at incentives for, you know, the 92,000, 94,000 homes that we already have here that don't necessarily have this system, and the thought of trying to encourage them to participate in that water conservation, if we were to give them a $500 credit for, for upgrading to a water sensor-based system, what's the incentive for them to do that? Is it, is it a wash, $500 to, to put this system in, and then they get the $500 through a rebate, you know, with the variance?
That's a variable.
That's a variable. And the reason why I say that is because you may have a system that's hydro-wise sound, distributes water properly, which is one of the requirements to get this rebate or to get this variance. The other, they may already be there, so it might be just an add-on for the smart controller. They might have things in place already. Chances are, they won't, okay? And at that particular point, you're looking at a pretty extensive renovation, which the $500 credit would go to alleviate some of that cost. So when you say, "What's the incentive?", well, if I'm going to tell somebody it's going to cost you X amount of dollars and here's $500 available, maybe that makes the sale for them to go forward and say, "Yeah, okay, maybe I can afford it now." But you have a wide range of different systems that may need different improvements to comply, if you know what I'm trying to get at. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but the $500 is almost never left on the table.
Okay. Well, you answered as well as you could at this point. I would speak in favor of the ordinance, but I think that we need to, certainly for future development and new homes being built in the area, this will have, I believe, a dramatic effect. I think as we move forward with it, we need to find some way to incent current homeowners to look at converting to the system and give them some type of an incentive to do that that will get their juices flowing to get involved with the conservation effort.
The biggest incentive for most of the people that I deal with, because I do this daily, is that they would appreciate the relief from the two-day-a-week, four-hour water window. That's the most inefficient way to water. That wastes more water than it conserves. So for the people that are constantly having issues with their old controllers and always have the water police stopping by, they're looking for a way to say, "Well, look, if this system allows me a variance to water when my lawn is asking for water and I don't have to worry about keeping track of a manual controller because I'm 90 years older, I don't live here six months out of the year," they're going to gravitate toward that, and a lot of people do. And the other thing I want to clarify is that we use the term soil moisture sensor exclusively when these variances come by with ET technology as well. They're both used, and the fact of the matter is, the ET technology is 98% of all the systems that are installed and upgraded.
ET?
Evapotranspiration. We're working with atmospheric conditions that tell us when to water and not to water. There are six of them that start with temperature, humidity, wind, soil type, slope of soil, and I forget the sixth one, but there are six different factors. And so most of your systems that are going to apply for this variance or that would be eligible for a $500 rebate would be on the evapotranspiration side or ET side of what we're trying to accomplish here. I just wanted to just kind of straighten that out a little bit.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add, since we have Phil Flood here, possibly the district in the past has done toilet rebate programs where if you put in a low-flow toilet, they will give us, they'll give us a pot of money to manage that, and they'll give a rebate for putting in a low-flow toilet. Perhaps the district could create a program where we would get a specific amount of money that we would manage, and for those that put in a new system, we could give that rebate in the form of a grant from the district for saving that water. So that's something that I would like to look into as well with the district and see if that's something they would consider.
Great. Thank you for listening.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stanky, 1992, 3B, and the ordinance addresses the registration. So that is in there to answer that question. When I picked this up two years ago, and I know Mr. King mentioned they've been working on it for about six years, it's important for everybody in the community to find ways where we can serve water beyond what we are doing now. And the fact that we're bringing in water from Charlotte and from Fort Myers, to me, only adds to the importance of finding water conservation. You can bring in all of the water in the world, as I've said before, but if you don't find ways to conserve it, that's going to run out, too. And I know we've been talking a lot about the smart controller systems, and that's important. But one of the reasons that we want to implement this and take our time and do it in 18 months, and that was something that we negotiated with the CCCIA, was to educate existing homeowners about what they can do now. And it doesn't necessarily need to be the smart controller system right away. You can do things like I did, is refit your yard with the proper spacing of heads and the right kind of nozzles and achieve the 70% efficiency, which this ordinance is trying to do. So you can do it in different stages. And I think educating homeowners about what they can do now provides some of that incentive because not only are you conserving water, but the fact that you only need an inch of water a week anyway, and if you have the proper watering system, only leads to a healthier lawn anyway. So the education process will be extensive, not only for current homeowners, but Mr. King working with irrigation experts that may not be familiar with the proper spacing of heads and the right way to put in lines. It'll be the CCCIA working with their builders to maybe start implementing some of this now and bringing it to homeowners' attention that if you do go to the smart controller system, you don't have to abide by the two-day-a-week because your system will take care of that for you. Last time this was brought before Committee of the Whole, there was concerns about costs. Yes, it could be more expensive to do the smart controller system, again, for new homes that are built in the future. But the key thing is now, for existing homeowners, you can do it in a way that financially makes sense for you and makes even more sense for the environment. And I think there are ways, Councilmember Stanky, to look at other grants that might be available for those existing homeowners, should they want to do this, to have some incentive with grants or other rebate possibilities. When we met the last time, the three big concerns were, we didn't have support, as Lynn mentioned, from the CCCIA, but we went back to the table and worked with them and worked out the details with hand drawings and inspections. And we also went back to work with the irrigation folks who had some concerns about regulations that would be followed. And it was important for us to take our time with this ordinance and get all these questions answered. The third point that came up during that meeting, well, what about Florida-friendly landscaping? I believe the mayor brought that up. We're going to encourage Florida-friendly landscaping because that can help conserve water as well. That's just another component to this. But we also know with 86,000 properties in the Cape that most people, just based on how they look at things, are going to want green lawns and flowers and trees and other ways to move forward. So I think anything that we can do, whether it's Florida-friendly, whether it's this proposed irrigation ordinance, whether it's other ways that we can serve water, all that plays into the fact that we have to look at our water supply now and know that we have to do things currently to protect our water supplies 30 or 40 years from now as we head towards build-out. So at least for this council, I hope that we've answered most of your questions. The ordinance kind of lays the framework for what we want to do, and now the next steps will be, should it pass, to move forward with how we're going to implement the regulations and the rebates. And another key component that wasn't mentioned to this, the only way this works efficiently is if we have proper water pressure. And by going to a new water schedule and adding another day in there, we have consistently maintained our pressures between 50 and 60, which is much higher than they used to be. The only way these heads will properly work is if they have the right kind of pressure. So we've proven now that we can keep the pressures consistent so that these systems can work efficiently. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, I guess I'll jump in here since no other lights are on. As Councilmember Hayden stated before, I had mentioned Florida Statute 373.185, which deals with the Florida-friendly landscaping method here in the state of Florida. I know Mr. King, many other organizations have went to the state, a variety of agencies, the building code requirements to try to get a more stricter irrigation ordinance in place. I know that we've kind of changed the title here today to water conservation ordinance, but really, this is the same thing that it's been for the last six to eight years. It's an irrigation ordinance on our irrigation practices here in Cape Coral. If you take a look at this ordinance and you look around at the other 411 cities, over 60 counties, hardly, none of those municipalities or counties have such a strict policy when it comes to their irrigation ordinances. I know Mr. King came to me back in 2017 to try to push this particular agenda forward. At that time, I wasn't in favor of doing that. Prior to me, I believe it was Councilmember Jim Birch, who he had approached and wasn't interested in moving it forward. So I guess eventually, Mr. King went to staff and then eventually to Councilmember Hayden as soon as he was elected, just like he came to me right after I was elected in 17. Some of the concerns that I have with this ordinance, first off, as we all know, there are a lot of our constituents throughout the city that would like to water more than twice a week. And I think this is a great tool that we could offer them if they choose to water more than twice a week because they probably will be conserving water compared to what they're doing now and probably not utilizing any more water if they water more so throughout the week with this type of system. So I would support this as a voluntary basis versus a mandatory basis for that reason. When you look at this ordinance, you look at some of the exemptions, and I think I'd mentioned this before, some of the exemptions in here, you have athletic fields that are exempt, you have golf courses that are exempt. And when you look at those two, just those two alone throughout the city here, they're utilizing a lot of water on a weekly basis in their systems. But to me, if we are really going to be serious with this, then it should be applied to everyone, including the city. I think we need to practice what we preach. You know, I know we've reached out to the Cape Coral Construction Industry, who opposed it in the beginning. They worked with them. I also reached out to the Lee BIA, who has not been a stakeholder and who has not been a part of the discussions. One of the things that I hear in the construction industry quite frequently is we need to have a standard type of approach when it comes to building throughout, especially the county. Because we have all the different cities here, depending on where you're going to build, you've got certain rules in certain cities, the county. I think trying to be consistent across the board is where we need to be. So if we're going to go down this path, I think that we need to reach out to the county and the other municipalities to see if they're interested as well. So we have that standard approach when it comes to the irrigation. I have reached out to many landscaping contractors that install sprinkler systems. This particular system will be two to three times the cost of what it is today. I reached out to some of the builders that build what I call starter homes. This type of a mandatory approach, there are some builders today that don't put pools in. They're trying to keep the cost of the housing down. They said this could be a decision where they don't put irrigation in. It's just trying to keep the cost low as possible with the houses. As we all know, one of our problems in our area is affordable housing. If this is a mandatory ordinance throughout the state or throughout the city, this could cause certain builders not to put an irrigation system in. Is that the local that we want throughout the city with our affordable housing? Again, I personally believe some of the exemptions should be removed. I think that it should be on a voluntary basis so we don't have those type of issues where contractors will say, "We're not going to put an irrigation system in at all because that irrigation system will go from $2,500 to $7,000." So that's my, I think it's a great approach. I just don't agree that it should be a mandatory system. If a resident wants to water more than twice a week, this gives them an opportunity to do that. So that's where I fall on the topic. I guess my views hasn't changed in the last five and a half years that I've sat here. So if it stays in its current form, I will be a no vote for this particular ordinance. Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I figure you weren't going to change your mind. But the fact of the matter is, golf courses, athletic fields, use a different type of grass, require a different type of watering approach. Most of the golf courses take their, get their water and irrigate from their own ponds. So that's a difference there. Athletic fields, kind of the same way, and you're not talking, those aren't a majority of the areas that we're talking about. You're only talking about two or three golf courses. That's not significant to alter what we're trying to do here. If you don't make it mandatory, you'll never conserve water in this community, which has to be, has to be the ultimate goal. And you have to look beyond just the new homes, and it's not going to cost 7, 8,000. I went over the numbers the last time. Yes, it could be more expensive. Everything's more expensive now based on the supply chain. But the fact of the matter is, we also have to concentrate on those people that have existing homes where more than 50% build out. So we're on the other side now of building new homes. So it's important to help them and work with them on, as I said earlier, about putting in efficient systems, and they don't have to do it all at once. You don't have to go to the Cadillac model right away. And no, the smart controller systems aren't going to allow you to water more frequently. They're going to adjust to what's going on, and if you need water, don't need water. With an efficient system, your root system grows deeper and you have a healthier lawn anyway. So, Mayor, I'm sorry you feel this way. I can refute every single one of your arguments. And I hope that, again, you look at the future of the city and the importance of conservation and preservation as well, beyond what you may think are not the biggest concerns for what this proposed ordinance accomplishes.
Councilmember Kostin.
Thank you. I'm going to just be very brief. This has been in the works for years. I've supported it all along, and I think this is a great version. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
I'm going to pretty much echo the same thing. I would support any sort of ordinance, whether it be mandatory or voluntary, as you stated, Mayor, to help conserve water and to provide a more efficient irrigation system. As we get to build out, we do have to be stewards of our community, and we owe it to the next generations that are going to be coming up that we provide everything we can to help conserve our city. So I'm for this either way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I don't see any other lights on. Okay. Seeing none, thinking very... Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. We'll move on to item two on the agenda, Hurricane Ian, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program update. Mr. City Manager.
Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. I thought I had enough time to run to the restroom. So today we're talking about the hurricane season kickoff here for 2023. It's already right here on our doorstep again for this coming year. So just as a quick overview, today we're going to talk about a quick look back at Hurricane Ian. Again, we have Dan Noah from the National Weather Service here with us today to give us some input on that. We're going to talk briefly about hurricane recovery efforts that are still ongoing. I know you guys get an update on that every city council meeting, so we'll go briefly through some of that. And then into the meat of the topic for today, looking at the forecast here coming forward, update from our communications staff, and then changes that we're planning on making from a critical review of our emergency operations, and then we'll go to questions. So if I can, Mr. Dan Noah from the National Weather Service.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You know better than everybody in Florida that we have a hurricane problem after what happened last year. We see, unfortunately, we've had six major hurricanes strike the Gulf Coast in the last five years. We've, something's going on, and we don't quite know what, but we can prepare for it. Let's put Ian in perspective. It was 150 miles an hour at landfall, just before landfall, it was 160 mile an hour, category five. So it's the fourth strongest landfalling hurricane. Third costliest hurricane on record, and these numbers are from Wikipedia. It's not some big NOAA survey, but I just wanted to put things in context and say, yes, this was a very historic hurricane. And of course, the worst part about it is the fatalities. And yes, I know 149 people in Florida perished from the storm, and our goal is to make sure nobody does. But let's look at what the recent past has shown us. 1900, almost up to 12,000 people died from one storm. This is before the days of information and preparedness and emergency management. But even in modern times, look at Katrina, we had over 1,300 fatalities. Maria in Puerto Rico, I think that's a low number at 3,000. Ian 149, still horrible, but emergency management and the work that you all did here got thousands or tenths of thousands of people out of harm's way. The way the weather warning system works in our country is, we call it the integrated warning team. It's the National Weather Service, it's emergency management, it's your local media. So the media, we rely on them to communicate the threat to the public. That's their primary source, that's their primary goal of the media is to do that. The Weather Service, we are the foundation of America's Weather Services, and then we come up with the forecasting impacts for Cape Coral. We communicate that to emergency management and you all, and you can make informed decisions. We have a communication challenge with Ian. Just the small track change, when it left Cuba meant it could have hit Cedar Key rather than Coyoacasta. And anytime we have a paralleling storm, we're going to have to warn the entire coast. The entire coast should evacuate, and only a small portion of that coast is going to be impacted. The thing is, we can't tell you which part. That's, we don't have that. When these paralleling storms, we don't like those storms. Even the computer simulations, spaghetti charts, these are the better models in the spaghetti charts, and they're still all over the place because a little change in the track makes a huge difference on who gets the impact. And you have to make the decision, which is really hard to do because you, it's not a yes or no decision, it's based on uncertainty. And so we communicate the uncertainty rather than saying, oh, we got a 1 in 10 chance of winds arriving at 8:00 PM Tuesday. We just say the earliest arrival, and the most likely arrival is a 5 in 10 chance. So when we're communicating to you, we're, we're using the probabilities, but we're not using those terminology. And so if we communicate something that's confusing to you, make sure you get us on the phone and ask us those questions. Our main job is to work with decision makers and emergency management during events. Of course, you have the wind issues and the power and all that stuff you got to worry about with hurricanes. The storm surge is the hardest thing to forecast, there are a bunch of different things that go into this calculation and modeling. And you can see this model on this day, the forecast was for up to 12 feet, and that was low. We got up to 15 feet on Fort Myers Beach in a small area. And if we look at storm surge, depending on how fast the storm is moving, that can keep that surge for hours and hours and hours. And of course, you had saltwater inundation on your streets, meaning nobody's going to be traveling. They are going to have to shelter in place at that time. Then there's the rainfall flooding. So with the tides are above normal, you're going to have heavy rain before even the main part of the hurricane gets here, you're going to have freshwater flooding of your streets. The thing that makes this type of flooding even worse is this. The rivers around here jumped in, you know, 10 plus feet in a half a day. And how does that affect you? You don't have any major rivers here. You do if we're talking about getting resources to Cape Coral from the east. We saw roads washed out, Marcadia, which you couldn't get there unless you were coming in from the east coast, and it can last four weeks and impact your recovery. And then finally, we had a meeting with emergency management and the local media here in Fort Myers. Actually, we were in Punta Gorda last, or earlier this month, and we talked about this cone of uncertainty. The cone is great, but we don't want you to use it when you're within three days of impact because this is the cone, if we zoom in, and here's where the impacts were. That's where the wind was. You can see how much the wind was outside of that cone. That's the rain, and this is the surge. So a lot of these impacts were outside of that cone. That cone only tells us where the center of the storm is likely to be, it doesn't tell us where the impacts are. So, you know, even though the cone at this time was moving west, it's looking better, it's looking better. You can see the right side of that cone is still over Cape Coral. And I'll take a break and come back in a little bit. There you are.
Thanks, sir. Again, Dan and his team, we're on the phone with him twice a day when we're looking at the threat of a storm. So we have an opportunity to get questions. So they're subject matter experts that we lean on significantly. The sound of his voice giving a presentation is a bit soothing. But going through the rest of where we're at now, obviously, we're in a constant preparedness model of making sure we're getting ready for the next storm. But obviously, when we have a disaster hit, we have that immediate response, that short-term recovery piece. I would consider us through the intermediate piece, and we're reaching into that long-term recovery now as we engage in all the other topics we're going to talk about later today with the CDBGDR conversation and other hazard mitigation grants and the other dollars that we need to continue to work on. So again, just to reiterate, we're years long in recovery based off of just last year's storm. And we're continuing to work with our consultants at Hagerty and Tetra Tech here, working directly with us as our subject matter experts on hurricane recovery here with the city, resiliently in the task force there. We have representation on that in all of the branches as we continue to work through that process, also working with the state for appropriations and other things that we believe we can work with them on changing some legislation perhaps, or other things that we need to help better recover from the state perspective or state DEM. And then on a federal perspective, working with FEMA on some of the still needed resources that we have and areas that they can continue to improve by providing some feedback from a local perspective. And I'll turn it back to Dan to focus on this coming season.
All right, so take a look at the names and see if your name is on the list for this year. Our lean will be the first storm. And we've had a lot of May storms over the last decade, and hurricane season doesn't start until June 1st, but there is talk to move it to May 15th, and so far, that's still talk, and we haven't changed it yet. So looking at the forecast, our forecast doesn't come out until the last week of May, but the Colorado State forecast is going for slightly below normal. And last year was almost exactly a normal season, and unfortunately, one of those was Ian. So why the slightly below normal forecast? It's because of something called El Nino, which is a naturally occurring climate pattern in the tropical Pacific waters. Every two to seven years, they're flipping back and forth between being above normal temperature, below normal temperature, or normal. And since it's such a big body of water, it impacts where the upper level jet stream flows across the United States. The jet stream is just a fast-moving river of air. There's cold air to the north of it, warm air to the south of it, and weather right along it. And with that jet stream over Florida, and now imagine that hurricane is coming from the east, moving west, but the jet stream is blowing from the west, moving east. So now you kind of rip the hurricane in half. The bottom part is going west, the top part's going east, and it keeps the storm from developing stronger. So that hopefully is going to kick in, and it looks like it's going to. So do we have to worry if we're going to have a below normal season? Well, we had seven storms, which is a much below normal season in 1992, and Hurricane Andrew was that one. So we'll still keep our eyes open, but it's trending in a more favorable position. Two things to consider for next time. First is how do we get these diehards to evacuate and make the appropriate decision? And, and they call them diehards, but some of the people that I talked to on Fort Myers and Fort Myers Beach, one of the gentlemen was in his early 80s and he had memory issues, and he said he didn't evacuate because he was afraid his family wouldn't let him come back. He didn't want to lose his place. And that's something I'd never even considered before, why people don't evacuate. And then lastly, it is our elderly population that was most impacted with the fatalities with Ian. So keep in mind these two things for next time, and our messaging, we're going to keep that in mind as well.
So as we continue to look at what we're doing here as a city, you know, we always embrace the continuous improvement model. We always look at every major incident, do an after-action report, which we're currently engaged in that process, and look at ways that we can continue to improve. So specifically, Melissa's going to give us some updates about things we're looking at for communications.
Good morning, Council. Melissa Mickey, Communications Manager for the City of Cape Coral. I'm going to go over a little bit of the challenges that we faced during Ian. So as you're all aware, we did lose electricity, we lost cell phone service, we lost Wi-Fi. It was spotty at best during the days and the weeks following Hurricane Ian, but this issue was not unique to Cape Coral. From what I saw and the information that we gathered post-storm, our communications team, we did think outside the box, we did the best we could with what was available to us. Also during the days post-storm, I was able to connect with communications professionals from other municipalities nearby. We also participated in JIC meetings, it's Joint Information Center meetings, and that included about 60 PIOs in the local area. And so some actually would ask us how we were managing to continue to push out messaging because some people felt dead in the water, and we were able to share some of the techniques that I'll get into a little bit further along, what we were doing post-storm. So what we did, what worked well. So we created a specialized webpage, we updated it daily, we held press conferences via Facebook Live for the residents and the media. We created talking points for our leadership staff, held and arranged individual interviews, held Facebook Live events for leadership to speak directly to residents. We sent out daily news releases and created videos with messages from our subject matter experts. We posted information on social media, including Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, and this included boosted posts with key messages pre and post-storm. We engaged with community conversations through social media, responding directly to questions from residents. 311 Call Center provided common responses to questions from residents. And our Joint Information Center, again, that's what we call when I say JIC, the Joint Information Center, we participated in calls with 60 PIOs or organizational equivalents and engaged in follow-up emails with approximately 100 or more PIOs, PIOs meaning Public Information Officers, Specialists. We also were able to utilize the Lee Alert Lee system and stakeholders' communications with Chamber of Commerce, the CCCIA, BIA, as well as the VCB, and of course, our Economic Business Development. So some things that worked really well despite the fact that residents didn't have power, limited cell service, and Wi-Fi. We created flyers. We updated our flyers daily and distributed them to our fire stations, City Hall, and the Police Department. Our communications team immediately sprung into action and began crafting a messaging for those flyers that we, again, like I said, we updated daily. With the help of emergency management staff, the flyers were distributed to the points of distribution as well as the fire stations and Police Department and City Hall, and also our SOS squad, which is our boots on the ground that traveled through the streets of Cape Coral, they were handing out the flyers as well. Our billboards in our downtown kiosks were not operational, so unfortunately, we couldn't use those, normally we were able to. But we also had some messaging on just a couple electronic message boards that displayed as you entered Cape Coral that advised people flyers were available at fire stations. Another thing that we were able to do is we connected with partners at Beasley Radio Stations. I actually reached out to a friend during the storm who put me in touch with the operations manager for Beasley Radio Stations, and they worked with me, and we built a great rapport. They also allowed me to deliver city messaging during their live shows that aired online as well as several of their local stations, which included B-1039, 96K Rock, Sunny 1063, and several other channels that they have. The Bounce, which is 96.5, 101.5, and Playa, 99.3, a Spanish station. And this was a really big win for us because I actually was able to hear directly from some residents who were very appreciative that they were able to hear Cape Coral specific messaging on the radio. In fact, one person said to me, I had no idea I could shower in this water, even though there was still a boil water notice in effect. So it was, it was good for the people who were able to tune in. But, you know, a lot of people don't have the hand crank radios, which is the only thing that would work at that time. So some of the issues, this year, we are actually going to increase. So residents, the issues, residents didn't know about the flyer distribution. Some may have, and some found out and saw, some saw key messaging and were able to find out that they were there, but not everyone knew. And also residents didn't, and a lot of them don't have hand crank radios, and they didn't tune in or didn't know to tune in to Beasley Station. So we are increasing our messaging on how the city will disseminate information to our residents during our citywide emergency. So some changes for this year, our hurricane kits. We are including, I think last year, I don't know that a hand crank radio was even part of our hurricane kit in our messaging, unfortunately. So we are encouraging all of our residents to purchase a hand crank radio and know that they can tune into any of the Beasley Radio Stations. That's 1039, 961, 1063, and 993 for Cape Coral-specific information and updates. We will communicate out the locations for our flyer distribution. In the event that we experience a citywide internet and cell service outage, residents will be able to visit City Hall, the Police Department, all of the fire stations, and as well as points of distribution if there are some. And to get any, to get the informational flyer that will be updated daily, they will be delivered by noon each day to those locations. Our electronic boards, it's something that's been brought up, I think Councilmember Shepherd, that was one thing that he was very concerned about. So we are, the city is looking into purchasing some mobile electronic message boards that could be deployed at a few major intersections within, with, that would have city messaging, advising residents where to get the flyers. And also Alert Lee. Alert Lee, it was interesting because prior to the storm, the city was actually working with the Lee County Government Emergency Management Team to get access to the Alert Lee system. So when the storm hit, we did not yet have something in place that would allow us to immediately send out messaging. What had happened is, and that's that push notification that you get through your phone that everyone was woken up last week with, so it's that notification. What would happen is, I would craft a message, send it to my emergency management leadership, they would send it to the Lee County Leadership of Emergency Management, and it had an approval process that took two or three days. And as you and I know, sometimes that was, the message would be old. So if we were, you know, a hygiene station could set up and close down within that time, or something could have changed. So unfortunately, during the storm, the Alert Lee messaging wasn't that useful to us. By November, there was an MOU in place, and we now have a much faster way of getting out messaging, so that's positive. And in case you're wondering, because I know there was an issue with the Everbridge con- And in case you're wondering, because I know there was an issue with the Everbridge contract, we just found out late yesterday, I found out that the Everbridge contract with the state of Florida has been extended through December 31st of 2023, so Lee Alert or Alert Lee won't be an issue for this hurricane season. Another thing that we are working on right now is the 3-1-1 app, which I'll present on later, but we are working actually with our IT to figure out how communications can have access to the push notifications through the app, which is another way that we'll be able to, you know, get information to our residents. Something that actually, you know, ideas can come from anywhere. We had a really good idea that came out of another department, and they talked about maybe we could do sandwich boards. So we are looking into purchasing some sandwich boards that could be deployed from the fire stations, that could have messaging that basically just a message saying, "This is where you can get information from." So that is something that we're going to have in our pockets so that, you know, what, we won't be able to, even with electronic boards, they won't be everywhere, but these that we could purchase a large amount of them for a relatively lower cost, and at least it could say, "Go to your nearest fire station for updated information from the city." Probably have to be shorter than what I just said, but something along those lines. And then finally, I do want to say, I want to encourage people to share. So what I think is equally important to recognize is the value and the importance and necessity for people to actively seek information. I, it's always discouraging. I've had phone calls, every once in a while, you get a resident who says, "I'm not on social media, I don't want to be on social media, I don't watch the local news, so I'm not going to see you guys on the local news. Well, we have the monthly e-newsletter, please sign up for our e-newsletter. I don't, I shouldn't, I don't want to go into my email, I don't want to look at that stuff." Postcards, they may just chuck it, you know, even when we send out the postcard. And of course, that's a process, so postcards during a storm, not very realistic that we would be able to get something out quickly to people, plus if the mail service may or may not be up. So if you're not actively seeking the information, that's a problem too. So I can tell you, you know, when cell service is out, you might not receive the push notifications timely. Without the internet, you can't check our social media pages, and we can't physically go door-to-door, we just don't have the manpower. So if you have information, and I say this not just to council, but to residents, anybody, people, staff here, please share it. I went home every night after the storm, and I would grab my neighbors, give them all the information that I had, and then say, "Share that, share that, share that. Tell your family, tell your neighbors, tell the other people in our community so that at least they knew whatever it was, you know, water is back on, yes, you can use the water," that kind of thing. And I encourage people to follow us on social media, to sign up for our city e-newsletter, and take an active role in the information that we receive. Also, one of the things that I just wanted to touch on, and I don't think I had it here, is the communications with council. That was definitely an issue, and it's something that we're aware of, and we are going forward going to have a liaison that will be specific to council in their communication. So they will know ahead of a storm, if you've evacuated, they're going to help connect with you, find out how they can actually get ahold of you during a storm or post-storm, just to make sure that you have the information so that if we're holding a press conference, if we're, you know, giving out whatever the information is, we will update you on a daily basis, and then you'll be able to have information and get to those locations. I was emailing and texting council, but as you know, sometimes those texts and emails just weren't going through, or you weren't able to get them depending on your location. So it was, it was a struggle that we will, we are working on figuring out better ways to do it, and I know that going forward with all of this different things in place, more messaging and figuring out and having a designated person for council, it will be better.
All right. So again, constant improvement, things that we're continuing to look at. So things that we had some ideas on, but things that we need to incorporate deeper into our plan. Hygiene stations, they weren't exactly in our plan, but we're going to incorporate them deeper, they were well-received and a need and for our community. Pods, there was a heavy discussion on, those would be designated by the state, or the federal government would come in and run them. We found out very quickly that the National Guard would come in and set it up, run it for a little bit, and then there was an expectation to turn it over. So there were some pieces there that we have to adapt to. The SOS squads, that was something that we did on the fly based off of people losing their house, their vehicles, unable to go get supplies or information. So now that we've done that, it was successful, worked well, we're incorporating that into our plan. And then something we call the aquapods, this is places in North Cape Coral that don't have potable water, if they don't have power, they don't have water. And so setting up places for individuals to go get water. We had some of those things pre-designated in the, in the past, and so just incorporating these things deeper into our plan. Other things for constant improvement, so our local staging area, again, was an area that we needed to further plan out. We end up making sunsplash here, the area for our local staging area. However, the area that you can see where a lot of our generators and message boards and tarps were delivered, there's soon going to be pickleball courts. And so we've got to improvise and adapt for where that future place is going to be. We have some ideas and a plan for the next local staging area that we would like to implement, but for safety and security reasons, I don't want to publicly talk too much about that to make sure that we, where all those resources are going to be coming in during a storm, is held confidential for safety and security reasons. But we do have things with sunsplash that are going to keep into that agreement with Pro Park that allow us to continue to use that site there, the parking areas, their concession stand, we have a backup generator there to be able to use that as we bring in additional folks from around the state and the country to come help support our community in the future. So as Melissa mentioned, and I know members of council are aware of this, but when we need resources, the upflow from the City of Cape Coral goes to Lee County Emergency Management, which then takes it to the state, and then eventually, if needed, it'll go all the way to the federal government. And so we saw a lot of times where there were issues, when something would get put into the system, it would take, you said, two or three days plus to get some of that information reviewed and in action through the county, and then up to the state, and so that resulted in delays, because once those resources are ordered, it takes, you know, 40-plus hours in some situations to get those resources activated and down here on-site. And so working with the county on a couple things, one is we put a representative, we have for years now, put a representative of Cape Coral in the Lee County EOC. We have the Assistant City Manager over there, and then we also put somebody from law enforcement in there to work with law enforcement partners. We're talking with them about having a representative from Lee County's EOC in our EOC to help bridge some of those, those gaps. They ended up doing that towards the end, and that was something that we gained some efficiency out of. And then also working with state DEM on some efforts that, depending on the resources, that it would go to the county and the state simultaneously, and that way we could pick up some speed getting quicker through some of those backlogs. We understand the county, you know, especially during this storm, they're worried about, you know, helicopter missions and the roads being washed out to Sanibel and Pine Island. However, you know, we have unique needs here in the City of Cape Coral as well, and we want to make sure that we represent our community and get those issues addressed as quickly as possible as well. So working on continuous improvement with those partners on trying to streamline that process to get resources ordered and cleared quickly so we can get them here as quickly as possible. So just a reminder, in the Cape Coral Court of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Article 4, is emergency management. This talks about the city manager has the power, duty, and authority to declare a local state of emergency. It lasts for seven days and must inform mayor and council of that. In these situations, it's not a all or none, it's an à la carte menu that the city manager can, in some situations, elect to do a number of things, like implementing our emergency plans, obligating emergency expenditures, or acting on behalf of the city. Additionally, it opens up some of these other things, like suspending the sale of alcohol or enacting curfews as needed. We talk about the role of our elected officials, this body, recommendations of things that we would ask you to do, like be a good example and, and share that timely and accurate information. We, like Melissa mentioned, understand that is important, that you stay informed through this process. Talking with the city manager, he is a, made it a priority that we keep the city council informed through this, any future storms or process, and some ways that we can help do that so that you can help be a conduit for your constituents to provide information and then also provide, get feedback and provide it so that we can address issues. So as Melissa mentioned, a single point of contact that I'll go out to councils as, you know, myself, Gee Sizmore, city manager, public works director, are very busy working through the, the issues at the time, that we will have one point that folks can get to, obviously with trying to use technology when possible. That gets difficult when we lose the cell and internet service, but then providing an in-person option and talking with the city clerk's office and the attorney's office about trying to provide some options that are also sensitive to sunshine law. So providing some options in these emergency situations that we can get you as formed as possible and still keep us compliant with that requirement. So we are also continuing to make adjustments to our emergency operations plan. Again, as you can imagine, there's a long list of things that we want to memorialize and document that went well, and things that we need to continue to improve on and strengthen some areas. So we are a very large community, again, 200,000-plus in population, covering 120 to 140 square miles if you count Burnstorm Marina, where the fire department provides service. We've run a hub-and-spoke concept that worked very well, and we want to further that. So instead of having everything come to one central point, we go to two or three central points, but then, you know, it doesn't make sense for a police officer working in South Cape Coral to drive all the way up here to get food, have a spot north-central and south for them to be able to get few food, fuel, resupplied, some of those things, that worked very well. We're reviewing all of the essential positions that we activated in the EOC or across the organization to see what positions we thought worked really well, what positions in the EOC maybe could work virtually, or what are some areas that we identified some gaps in that we need to add somebody into. In addition to that, we're working on job aids, and the job aids are going to be essentially kind of a Cliff Notes version, as we know that we, we've got a lot of people that got a lot of experience out of Irma or Ian, we want to make sure that that's documented so if they retire or promote to another position, somebody else steps in, that we keep some of that information so that somebody gets kind of a cheat sheet, a bullet point list of this is what this job does, or things to be aware of. So EOC versus the dock. So our EOC is our citywide coordination for all emergency activity. And so those are the pictures on the left. It's standing room only in the EOC. You can see the bunk bed cots trying to shove four people into those cots in that small area to be able to get by, trying to create a quiet area in the, in the back of the structure of our current EOC. As you're aware, we have a state appropriations request into the state to get some additional funding to expand that. As we, our city continues to grow, it's essential that our EOC matches the increased staff that we're going to need to be able to respond to these incidences. So based off of some of that, what we've also done this year, which, which worked well, was what we call docks or department operations centers. And so this is where a lot of the tactics come through, with the, the EOC kind of comes up with the strategies, the overall objectives. The docks go through how those specific mission requests are going to be implemented, and what resources are they going to need. So for instance, in the third floor PD, we're running dispatch, our police and fire, we're coordinating all of those tactics of where the mutual aid teams going into, what calls we currently have ongoing, what fire stations were evacuated, where do we need additional police officers, all that was happening up there. And also at the North Water Plant, all the things that were needed to go through to keep water, get water restored, those all kind of being tactically driven out of there with a liaison back into the EOC, which talked about, hey, directionally out to the utilities group, this is what we would like to get accomplished today, and they would feed back, you know, what resources or challenges they were having trying to get that accomplished. It's just difficult, we can't stick everybody in the EOC, all of our hardened structures are essentially full with essential staff. We are utilizing something that's a little bit unique, we're actually going to present in two weeks at the National Hurricane Conference, the Governor's Hurricane Conference here, about some of this community lifeline construct that's making sure that the things that are essential to our community are being monitored and tracked so we can make sure that those essential, like, community lifelines are being met, or what are the gaps that we can get them restored quickly. So doubling down on a couple things that we've done, we have somebody from the CCCIA and the Chamber of Commerce in the EOC during the event, so before the hurricane hits, we have somebody in there, and we work with them throughout the storm. Part of this is making sure our businesses get back up and running as quickly as possible, and that's done with, for instance, Donna Germaine from the chamber, reaching out to her members to find out who's damaged, what it takes to get back open, if a pharmacy can get back open, that takes a burden off of the EOC to be able to provide, you know, a medication, or if we can get a dialysis center back up and running, some of those essential services, so coordinating with some of those businesses. Also, we've had a lot of productive conversations with Cape Coral Hospital, and their response after the, the storm, the things that they did, we were able to provide them some support and able to get feedback from what they were seeing as challenges there. One of the things we're continuing to focus on there is the health of, of the city and providing healthcare, and so we've invited, and they've accepted, to put a position in our EOC from the Cape Coral Hospital as well, to act as that immediate liaison between the two organizations. So other things that worked really well during the storm, if we had something under a contract, it worked very good. It was, it was a very good response, not only for getting the service, but then it also works very well for getting reimbursement after the fact. FEMA really likes having pre-existing contracts because it's, you know, you're not negotiating emergency rates, these are things that are done under blue skies. So Ceres, who did our debris hauling and some wraparound services, like those hygiene stations, that worked very well. Obviously, we had Hagerty in there before the storm, and they're still here with us afterwards. Tetra Tech also working on some things like debris monitoring, or helping with some of the HMGP grants. Our food contract worked very well for feeding all of our, almost 1,300 employees that worked during the storm, plus all of the National Guard mutual aid folks, that, those things worked very well because we had them under a pre-existing contract. So working with our finance department about trying to get any of those other services that we're lacking, get those under contract so the next storm, we don't have to go try and find an answer, it's just activate the contract. And heaven forbid, we have another storm this year, but the best thing that we've got going for us as a, as a city that we continue to hear is the, our, our employees are fantastic, and their response and stepping up and eagerness to help our community, our volunteers, and of course, our residents that help each other through this storm. So upcoming things that we've still got coming up, so we have a Hurricane Expo that we're doing across the, for the whole city, which is going to be at Marcola Market on May 31st from 2:00 to 7:00, it's going to be a bit of an open house style. There, folks can come in, I think there'll be some door prizes, other information that'll be there to help people get prepared for the storm, or next hurricane season, excuse me. And then also on June 20th, we have a Hurricane Seminar, will be here in council chambers. Again, June 20th from 5:00 to 8:00, we'll have a number of presenters, it'll be a bunch of folks giving some quick updates on things that you can do to make sure you're prepared for next hurricane season, and then we'll have folks around afterwards to ask and answer individual questions. Also, on May 10th, we have a Resilient Lee Town Hall that'll be hosted here. The mayor will give some opening remarks, but that'll be hosted primarily by the Resilient Lee Task Force folks, that'll be getting information back as the county and the city recover to get priorities from our community on where they'd like to see some of those recovery efforts focused. And with that, we'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, reference their presentation? Okay, I don't see any. Chief, I appreciate the update, and I know, you know, we're all been involved, I think, in the evaluation and action plan after the hurricane, so, and it'll learn what we can do better the next time. I think all of us that were a part of, of that storm realizes that, you know, we can always do better, so we self-evaluate and make sure we make those changes so we're better prepared the next time. So thank you and staff for all your work and making sure that we are prepared. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the new items that we're going to have in moving forward that was presented this morning was the predetermined location and time for council to, to come in should we have another storm. I don't know that we need to resolve that today, but as we approach closer to any type of storm, we'll probably want to have a discussion about where that is, you know, council downstairs has the, the hurricane curtains, and it makes it difficult to come to and from in that building when those curtains are up. So we may have another building, such as the Public Works Annex, or the City Hall, we'll just have to discuss, you know, where that is and what time is, is convenient. And then we'll utilize that same time to, to have the, the teams meeting, just in case somebody cannot attend in person. So just be thinking about that as we get closer into the season.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item agenda, if we don't have any other questions, which is FY 2021 Utilities Annual Report Presentation. On my paper, it says FY 21, so I guess that was a typo.
Mr. Mayor, we have the CDBG DR.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So talking about that, we'll have Ms. Tanya from Hagerty come up and give us a presentation on that new initiative.
Thank you, sir. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tanya Shannon from Hagerty Consulting, working with Shirley. He's been working with you guys since prior to the hurricane. Do we need to do something for? Oh, there we go. All right, so I'll be talking about the Community Development Block Grants Disaster Recovery, or CDBGDR. It is going to be something that the community is going to be talking about significantly, so you'll be able to say the acronym as quickly as I do, probably within the next couple of months. This is a very unique opportunity for this region in terms of, this is the first time that the federal government has awarded this dollar amount to a local government, with the exception of New York City after Tropical Storm Sandy. This is the largest dollar amount that has been awarded to a county by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And to kind of give a comparison, the state of Florida has never received more than $1 billion. The highest amount that they have received is $900 million. The kind of comparison is that the state of California, Louisiana, New Jersey, New York, Texas, and a couple of other jurisdictions have received this level of funding. And that just reflects the level of devastation, the impacts of Hurricane Ian, and the wide-scale damages that it caused. And very uniquely, the funding is coming locally and not going through a state by being awarded to Lee County, which will then include awards. The funding will then pass through to the local governments. But so, in the rules with regards to CDBGDR, it is very specifically for the low- to moderate-income communities. So, for perspective, for a family of four, that's roughly a total income of $64,000. It needs to be, 70% of these funds must be given, be awarded to support, to benefit low- to moderate-income populations throughout the county. So, that's approximately $775 million of this has to be spent on a low- to moderate-income community. That provides a unique challenge with regards to this event because it also wants to go towards the most impacted communities. So, the areas that are typically characterized as like Sanibel, Lower Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach, and at least within Sanibel and Fort Myers Beach, there's only one designated block that is low- to moderate-income, and that is within Fort Myers Beach, right when you get off the San Carlos Bridge. So, it will be very much a discussion within the community of how should these funds be utilized to benefit the low- to moderate-income while also benefiting the most impacted areas. But this is a hard rule with HUD that 70% of the funds must be spent on low- to moderate-income communities. There is a requirement to support the most impacted and distressed community. When that is done at the state level, that's usually, so for Hurricane Michael, the most impacted and distressed was Bay County, Gulf County. But some of the other surrounding counties did not receive that designation because that's where it was hardest hit. It is very rare, when funds are allocated at the local government, honestly, I don't know of an occurrence where it was, that they go beyond the county level. So, we are not anticipating that HUD, they can, but we don't anticipate that HUD will designate like municipalities or specific zip codes for most impacted and distressed, that the entire county will be identified as most impacted and distressed. 15% of this funding must be spent on mitigation projects. So, that is, provides a unique opportunity, kind of like your hazard mitigation grant program projects, where there it doesn't have to be a tieback to Ian. For the non-mitigation dollars, it can do mitigation, but there has to be a tieback to Ian. It can be a looser tieback than what you see in some other funds, but there has to be a story there on why it is addressing something related to Ian. But for that mitigation pot of money, it can be something that is just knowing that this is a project that you need to become more resilient for the next storm very far away from now. There is funding that is available for administrative costs in administering these grant programs. 5% of the funding can go towards that, but the rest of the funding either can go towards, 15% can go to planning, and that doesn't necessarily have to be related to the CDBGDR. It can be related to emergency management planning, continuity of government planning, going towards long-term recovery planning. So, with planning costs, it can be not necessarily specific to Hurricane Ian. But the rest of the funding must go towards active delivery of projects, building infrastructure, repairing homes, building low- to moderate-income housing. So, these are just kind of some of the high-level rules for CDBGDR. With this funding, it is intentionally very flexible. And this is why, for folks in our industry, CDBGDR is a little bit more difficult, is because it changes every single time. HUD reissues the rules and can rewrite the rules every time they do it. So, right now, we are waiting for them to issue the rules on Hurricane Ian, on what the county will need to follow, and what Cape Coral and the municipalities will need to follow. The HUD has done an announcement, they did the press release down in Fort Myers Beach, but we have yet to actually receive the formal notification that these funds have been awarded with the rules that will outline what can be done and what are the requirements and compliance requirements. That is called the Federal Register, and that we are hoping will come out in May, in early May. But ultimately, HUD does not have any regulatory timeline that they have to follow in order to tell us what the rules are and officially notify that the funds are coming. But at a high level, we know that a significant portion of this funding is going to go towards housing. How HUD does this allocation is based on an algorithm largely driven by the housing impact, by the FEMA Individual Assistance numbers. They collect FEMA Individual Assistance, FEMA Public Assistance, and SBA data that once Congress has said, you have this much money for all the disasters in 2022, HUD then breaks it up based off of all the disasters in the event that happened in that year that was declared. Lee County, this region had such an impact to housing, way, a much larger number in comparison to the other disasters that occurred within 2022, that that is why this much more significant allocation is coming to this region and being focused in this area. So, we are anticipating that HUD is going to strongly encourage, and by strongly encourage means this is what we got to do, that a significant portion of this funding be spent on housing. That can be projects like repairs to single-family homes, repairs to apartment complexes or condos. It can be building low- to moderate-income housing. There was a significant housing crisis prior to Hurricane Ian, and Hurricane even even made it just that much worse. So, building low- to moderate-income housing, and repairs to public housing authorities and things along those lines. We're really focusing on strengthening, bringing back the housing stock, and then improving the housing stock for the low- to moderate-income community throughout this region. There are also other programs like buyouts. This is something that is currently, I personally live in Panama City, and we work with Panama City, and this is, buyouts were a significant program that were done, where they purchase a large number of homes that are frequently flooding and turning it into green space. What is nice about CDBGDR is that you can either go on pre-event value or post-event value of the home, whichever is more beneficial to the homeowner, purchase the home, and then also provide them relocation assistance. So, it is kind of a whole case management package for the individuals that are trying to sell their homes and so that they can get out of this repetitive flooding situation. So, that is another program that can be done under CDBGDR. For infrastructure, so FEMA Public Assistance, which is the program that we're currently going through, FEMA wants to see what did Ian break? Specifically, Ian broke this by either flooding, wind, broke a thing over here that fell onto the asphalt, damage, they want to see a very direct cause of Hurricane Ian. CDBGDR provides a little bit flexi, more flexibility. So, another example from Panama City is that underground water infrastructure there was built in the 1950s. The majority of it is made out of terracotta clay, which is very durable, which is why it's largely doing well. However, it's not something that is utilized very frequently anymore. And also, since it was built in the 1950s, the population has significantly grown since then, and so there needs to be an increased capacity. Michael didn't break the pipes. Michael took down all the trees. There was significant, just looked like toothpicks or that were cut. So, with that, the tree canopy is gone, trees aren't there to absorb the water anymore. So, this older underground water infrastructure with a higher population can't handle this increased water that is now, well, this regular water that's happening, but can't handle the water that the trees are no longer absorbing. So, that is our story of connecting. Ian took the trees, the trees aren't absorbing the water, and our existing infrastructure can't handle the current underground, can't handle the current water that is coming from our regular rain. So, a CDBGDR is looking at, there has to be some kind of tieback, but it doesn't have to be exactly Ian broke this. It's a, this is what we need to be more resilient. It needs to be for buildings that are not administrative in nature, but it can be government buildings. So, for example, education spaces, so building additional classrooms, fire stations, things along those lines, providing mitigation, strengthening them, utilities, civil infrastructure and things along those lines. It's just that HUD, there was a disaster where the funding really wanted to be used to build EOCs, and HUD made this rule that, no, it has to be a space that the public is regularly using for the infrastructure piece of this. It also can go towards cost share. So, and the local governments are all working on Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which has a 25% cost share that the locals must commit to. CDBGDR is one of the few grant programs that you can pair with other federal funding. So, for example, Panama City has no cost share for any of the grants that they have. That CDBGDR is covering a significant portion, as well as other grants are covering the cost share of other grants. It can be a force multiplier in pursuing other grants that may have a cost share, or if you take a cost share, you become more competitive, such as Resilient Florida, that you can then pair with CDBGDR to be able to then maximize this funding. Other programs that can be done with this funding is economic revitalization. So, that can be loans or grants to the private sector if they commit to creating new positions or doing rehabbing of certain commercial sectors. That has been a huge lift for Panama City. They've received around $22 million to redo the facades of all the downtown area to bring it, making it more revitalized, being in a place that people want to come to. So, that is also another opportunity, as well as workforce training and other types of education for the public. There's also public services. They can do, the programs can be including like legal services to advocate for folks that are struggling with insurance providers, make sure that they get the full claim. It can also be case management services to find housing or find jobs or things along those lines. It can be a direct public service as well. And then acquisitions similar to that buyout program that I was previously mentioning. With CDBGDR, one key component is, some folks were like, okay, well, we're struggling significantly with public assistance or one of the others grants, we're going to go to CDBGDR instead. If it's eligible under FEMA PA, you have to go after FEMA PA dollars or any other kind of FEMA program. It can't be used to replace that, so continuing in your PA claim, but it can be used to complement it. So, for example, we had a client that, Michael damaged a couple of the streetlights that were, that were along a very high foot traffic area. So, PA paid for the very specific traffic lights that broke, but they wanted to bring it up to be a lot more, to a higher standard, to a higher code, to ensure that this does not happen again in a future event. So, CDBGDR supplemented that smaller grant from FEMA Public Assistance to replace all the lights along that strip to be more resilient for future storms. And we're going to talk about the action plan in just a little bit. The reason why I'm saying can be spent on this is HUD gives a high level, this is what you can do with the funding, but ultimately, the county will need to write an action plan identifying how they want to use this funding. There's going to be the HUD telling them, we think you should spend this portion on housing, this much on infrastructure, but explicitly what types of programs, how they want to administer it. The county will be submitting an action plan. However, whatever they end up submitting, within 120 days of when the Federal Register comes out, that official notice, is not the end-all, be-all. Currently, Louisiana still is spending their CDBGDR dollars from Hurricane Katrina from 2005. They are currently on their 71st iteration of their action plan. So, it is something that can be revised. And additionally, it'll be in close coordination with HUD and other agencies as well. So, what can you do right now? What are the next steps? So, the county will be ultimately the ones responsible for developing the action plan. However, what Cape Coral can do is, what is, how do you want to see the county implement these fundings? How do you want them to pass through funding to the municipality, specifically Cape Coral? What types of projects should be prioritized? How should the housing be implemented? So, figuring out what is your ask, sorry, I have a fly that's like now my best friend. So, figuring out what is your ask, what do you want this funding to be spent on? How do you want them to write the action plan? And then, coordinating closely within them. Mayor Gunter is a member of the Recovery Task Force, is communicating those priorities through that avenue, but then also in direct communication with the county and saying, this funding's coming. This is what Cape Coral would like to see in terms of how Lee housing is going to be implemented, in terms of repairs to direct homes, or these are the types of low- to moderate-income communities that we would like to be developed within Cape Coral. This is the type of infrastructure projects that we would like to be prioritized. Is it either a algorithm based off of these factors, or we would like it to be a competitive grant program? So, working through, what is that ask to the county, and then advocating for that position in terms of, and working with them ultimately to include within the action plan. It will need to be very much based on data, on terms of like the number of homes that were impacted. This is the population growth that we are anticipating. These are the different grants that we are pursuing, and this is the cost share that we would like assistance on, that is eligible under CDBGDR. So, really formalizing that ask and advocating it with the county. With that, any, however way the county decides to write the action plan, they will need to outline capacity. So, if they identify that they are going to provide this type of funding to Cape Coral, or they're going to go through a competitive grant program, they will have to outline what is their capacity to be able to administer the $1.1 billion? But then, also, if they identify specific projects within the action plan, which they don't have to at that time, they can wait until later on when they're administering the programs. But that'd be something for Cape Coral to consider, is if you are wanting to push for a certain allocation or types of very specific projects to be included in the action plan, what is Cape Coral's capacity to administer these grants? I know that you will all receive a CDBG funding regularly. So, CDBGDR is based on the CDBG program, but it has a significantly higher compliance requirements. The regular requirements of Davis Bacon and other reporting is there. But just for comparison, the county is currently going through their audit, the first in five years for their CDBG, CDBG funding, their regular allocation. CDBGDR has a two-to-three times a year audit requirement, where HUD sends a team where if there is, funding is being spent at the county or in Cape Coral, where they are constantly auditing these fundings. And because this is the first time that a local government outside of New York City received this level of funding, that we are anticipating a lot of eyes on this money. So, having a clear idea of what does staffing look like? What, if an additional pot of money were to be allocated? What would be timelines? How would this funding be utilized by Cape Coral, and how would you go through the process? At this point, it doesn't need to be incredibly detailed, but kind of an idea to be able to communicate. to communicate to the county and saying, we would like this, and this is how we will do it, if we were to receive this funding. There are several, HUD has a lot of resources online outlining exactly what they are looking for in terms of very specific policies. You are in a very good position because you already receive your regular CDBG funding, but again, there is a much more, a higher level in terms of compliance requirements with CDBGDR, so just being ready for it, for those questions. So that action plan timeline, the second that the federal register drops, which can happen any minute, but they do not have to provide any kind of heads up, it triggers 120 day timeline that the county will have to submit the action plan. They can ask for an extension, but they need to provide an justification for how. With that, they essentially will need to have it written within like a 60 to 90 days because there are other things that need to happen. But within the first 60 days, they have to submit all of their policies and financial requirements and certifications to HUD. So this is strictly between the county and HUD. They will then continue to simultaneously write the action plan and complete the unmet needs assessment, because within the, within the 120 days, they will have to make available the entire action plan, and it's almost final iteration, to the entire public for public comment. The county will then need to do a series of town halls and conversations with the public to get input. Every single comment that is made by anyone within Lee County has to be addressed within like a ma, within a matrix that the county will have to produce and provide to HUD. So that is another opportunity for Cape Coral to be able to provide input that if the action plan, if you would like to make edits once they do release it, having staff available to be able to go through it in great detail and advocate for the positions that Cape Coral develops and how you would like to have the funding spent, and then the county will have to address that, and HUD will be asking them. Ultimately, that 30-day public comment period happens, they incorporate or they respond to every single comment that is made, and then they submit the final action plan and unmet needs assessment to HUD for their review. HUD then has up to 60 days to be able to provide either feedback, requested edits, or if they do not believe that public engagement was sufficient for requesting that additional public engagement be, to occur, or they can approve the action plan outright. So they have 60 days to do that. If they approve it, then at that point, the county will be able to sign a contract with HUD to start implementing the programs. But just to manage expectations, the earliest we're looking that dollars will actually start being able to flow and programs are being implemented is very end of this year, early One of the major, one of the questions that we frequently get is that 70, that 70% spent on low to moderate income populations. So there are waivers. There is a waiver to request for HUD to reduce that 70% requirement and have it be 50, 67, 65%. It is a very high bar to make that request. We are currently working, Hagerty has a team that is working with a state that had a series of fires that largely impacted very, very wealthy individuals, that there is not a low to moderate income block that we can find, that is designated by HUD within the designated disaster area. Despite that, HUD made them wait three and a half years before they could even ask for a waiver. We submitted the waiver two months ago, we're still waiting on a response. So what we're recommending is that design your programs, design your ask around assuming that the waiver is not coming for quite some time and how you would like to submit these fundings, and then submit the waivers and show the due diligence in trying to spend the money, the 70% of the funding in the low to moderate income community. There are HUD designated blocks, but that also, if it's an individual home or building low to moderate income, you can evaluate based off of the individual homeowners. They don't have to be in one of those blocks. They can be individually as a homeowner, this is my income, I am low to moderate income. Or if you build low to moderate income housing, at least 51% of the housing needs to, 51% of the residents need to be low to moderate income for the entire project to be considered low to moderate income, within the 70% bucket. So there is this waiver, there are other waivers that are, are less difficult to achieve. For example, one of our clients was able to have HUD redefine what low to moderate income is, rather than it being 80% of the average median income, having it be 120% of the average median income. So rather, or designating certain populations as automatically considered, such as populations over the age of 65. So having those conversations, we advise as being highly more likely to be successful than immediately asking for a change of the, the 70% requirement. With that, if there are any questions with regards to CDBGDR?
Councilmember Hayden.
Well, you threw a lot at us.
Yes.
Based on your, and I'll start with one, the last thing you said, based on your timeline, you, you said we, you thought we might be able to see money flowing by the end of the year. Based on that timeline that you showed, it took it out 13 months. So, and then on the Katrina thing, you said they've made 71 revisions. Have they been seeing money during that time? Or have the, are they waiting on the final revisions?
No, 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 they are implementing it as they're going. So for example, those revisions can be, recently the state of Florida has revised their action plan for Michael and Hurricane Irma, which are separate action plans, to move money from different pots, to move money from the economic recovery and move that into the housing, that the demand on the housing repairs was higher than the demand on the economic recovery. So those revisions are, can be either, hey, we want to do this, this is becoming a need, we want to do this new program, or we want to reallocate funding between the programs based off of what we are seeing through implementation. But they can continue to implement the programs as they are outlined within the action, the approved action plan while they are waiting on the revisions, if, if, what, if and when they are needed.
I think when it was first announced that this $1.1 billion was going to be available to the county and to the cities, I think initially, or at least I did, that we thought we might get our piece of, piece of the pie of it. Obviously, that's not the case. It sounds like it's going to be based on the action plan, and you may have three or four things covered in that action plan, but not, but maybe not the fifth, based on the priorities from whatever is presented in the other action plans from the other city and the counties. Is the, am I right about that?
So I know there is currently discussion and information being provided that potentially within the federal register, it will identify like this pot of money must go to Fort Myers and Cape Coral. It can be outlined in that, that would be the first time HUD has ever done that. So that, that is when we heard that that information had been shared, we were a little confused because HUD's never done that before. It's not saying that, again, they can rewrite the rules every single time.
We're not anticipating them breaking tradition and.
Yeah, it'd be very surprising. What typically the action plan doesn't identify very specific projects, like we are going to put money towards this bridge or this specific underground infrastructure span. It is more of a, we are going to spend $300 million on infrastructure projects, it will be a competitive grant program administered by the county, this is how we're going to administer it. Or it can be, we are going to provide this $100 million to this municipality, they're going to administer it, and this is how we're going to provide oversight. So those are potential options that the, the county can do. So that's part of the formulating your ask of how you would like these funds to be administered and communicating that to the county.
Okay, so it sounds like there might be several layers to this beyond what our action plan says. They may say, all right, a lot of the communities want this amount of money to go towards infrastructure or multifamily housing, all right, we're going to distribute in that way, depending on what, if there's a majority of the needs coming from one area. Second of all, does the county have the final say in how the money is distributed, or does it have to be approved through HUD at the, at the end?
HUD has to prove everything. So the, the county will put forward, so HUD is a little different than FEMA. FEMA is like, here's the rules, here's the rulebook, it's three inches thick, and you have to do these things. HUD is like, we think it should be this, but doing anything different from what they think, you have to prove a lot of data. One of our clients, Nebraska, wanted to change the allocation of funding, HUD thought a certain percentage should go to housing and a certain percentage should go to infrastructure. Nebraska wanted to do more towards infrastructure, and a lot of research data had to go forward to change that what they think should be. And it took about nine months to do. But yes, the HUD will have to ultimately approve whichever, whatever the county puts forward.
Well, and I think the confusing part about this is, you know, it lists restrictions, possibly low and moderate income, but then it appears there's flexibility because there's one paragraph in there where you listed health facilities, recreation facilities, roads, bridges, different things somehow tied back to the storm, which takes it out of necessarily low and moderate income, and you can make the case, according to census data, that the median income in Cape Coral is $64,000. So that seems to bring into play a lot of families in Cape Coral. So I, I know a lot of this comes more into focus when we get the register and all this, but man, there's a lot of unanswered things on, you know, how this money can be used.
So with the infrastructure projects, as long as we can show benefit, it's getting creative in how to tell the story. So for example, Panama City Beach by Hurricane Michael only had two cents, only had two census tracts that had low to moderate income. We were able to secure $22 million for an Outfalls project that was very much in one of those blocks. The other project was the lighting project that I previously mentioned, that, that was not in a low or moderate income community. However, it was the only grocery store within that corner of the island, and we were able to make the argument like that is the grocery store that the other census block goes to. So it is benefiting that low to moderate income community. So that's, it is a and, it could go to healthcare facilities, it can go to schools, it can go along those lines, with, and that 70% has to benefit that low to moderate income, but you can get creative in terms of if it's not within one of those census blocks, but it benefits the low to moderate income community, and just building that story. So it just takes a level of creativity, but it is an and requirement. There was a federal register that was released in January of this year for another series of disasters, we're anticipating that this federal register will match it, about 98% of it, based of HUD's. So there is what we think it most likely will look like, there may be some nuances that are different, but 98% of it will most likely match the federal register that was released in month, in January.
Thanks, ma'am.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, the, I think I heard you say that the low to moderate income is considered 80% of median income. How is that geographically defined? In what area? For instance, in our county, certainly Sanibel Island is going to have a different, in general, income median than Cape Coral would. Where's the geography established to determine what the median income is?
Is defined at the county level, so the entire population within the county, but then they look at individual census blocks to make that determination if there is a population that meets that definition.
An anomaly for the area, they're going to find something that, they can carve something out through that census tract? That would be an exception to the county?
You can build an, so Cape Coral actually has a special designation, so there are a couple of blocks that are a little different than the 80% at the northern part of Cape Coral, and we can provide a map to the chief and to the city manager to see where HUD is seeing as the designated census block areas that are low to moderate income. You have several blocks in the northern part of Cape Coral that are designated low to moderate income, and then you have a small strip near the lower end on the west side of Cape Coral. I've spent a lot of time with this map, so I pretty much memorized it, that is low to moderate designated. But again, for housing, it can be at the individual homeowner level, it doesn't have to be within one of those blocks, or it can be a low to moderate income designated housing community, and at least 51% of them has to be reserved for low to moderate income populations. But the dollar amount is the one that is set by HUD. If you disagree with HUD's map, because they are going off of some pretty old data, you can go through a series of surveys. That was something that we were exploring for Panama City Beach. It is a significantly high level of effort to get a significant population to respond to those surveys and provide the information pertaining to their income to re-designate a block. But they do have some preset blocks that have identified as low to moderate income within Cape Coral.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed in there where it said second homes were, were not included, I would, I would doubt that if it was a second home, that it would qualify for low to moderate, maybe, maybe not. But how is that second home identified? Is it the, only a home that is homesteaded is, will qualify, or is, how do they establish whether that is a second home or first home? We have a lot of people that have a home somewhere else, how does this particular program identify that it's a second home and not a primary home?
I don't have the exact language within the program memorized, but I can get you that piece. It essentially, and designated, however they worked with FEMA, and if they identified as their primary home or within their taxes as their primary residence, but I can get you the exact language.
So FEMA is connected with this in some way for that purpose?
They do a lot of information sharing in terms of the unmet needs assessment that the county will be doing. Essentially HUD gives us FEMA's data, that gives the county the, the data, and then the county has to regurgitate that data and provide it back to, to HUD to show the unmet needs. So largely this, this, largely this will be driven by the data that FEMA collected through the individual assistance process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, I just had a question for you. So we can get creative with this funding, correct?
Correct.
But the question I had to ask you, I think you, you made this statement, but I just want to verify it. Did you say we could not utilize the funds for like a shelter here? Is that correct?
It can be for a shelter, yes.
So it can be for a shelter, so we would have to look at our demographic in our city to where was a lower income to put a shelter in there?
Yes, if you're doing it for a shelter, HUD would want to look at what you're planning on using it for the non-hurricane days. So HUD doesn't want it to be a building that strictly is an administrative building for government purposes. They want it to be a building that the public has regular use of it and regular access for. So for example, Panama City Beach built, utilized a combination of CDBGDR and HMGP funding to build a safe, a very, very large safe room in Frank Brown Park. We used the data from one of their huge concert series to say, we, if a tornado were to hit during this huge concert series, we needed a space for every, all 10,000 individuals in attendance to go into that shelter. What they're using it for during non-tornado days is a boys' and girls' club. So you can get creative.
That was my next question. So let's say we have somebody that's looking at bringing something here into Cape Coral. We can add a program like this to what they, they are building, and for any type of weather disasters, it's also a shelter.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, reference to this particular topic? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Just to add, if I may, Amy Yearsley is our resident expert who's very versed in all of this, and actually is meeting with HUD currently on some of these topics. So between Amy and our folks at Hagerty, we're working on a lot of our plans to make sure we're as ready as we can be as soon as that notice is released, that we can start getting some of those projects and ideas in, in the pipeline. Thank you.
Chief, is there any other subtopics under, under this particular heading?
I'm complete, sir. Mr. City Manager, anything else, sir? Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, I think we'll take a 15-minute break till 11:25 before we go into the next topic, which is going to be the Utilities Annual Report presentation. topic, which is going to be the Utilities Annual Report presentation.
Okay.
All right, I'll be back for order. Next item for the agenda is the new order. Wait, I'm sorry. Utilities saving report presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director.
There we go. The Utilities Department successfully met operations and maintenance obligations through our established rates. We also generated the required net revenues, expansion fees, and special assessment proceeds to service our debts and other obligations. We maintained and operated the utility system in an efficient and economical manner. We exceeded minimum debt service coverage requirements as required by our bond resolutions, planned capital improvements to meet anticipated future service needs, and revenue necessary for such purpose. AECOM completed our annual report for fiscal year 2021. And I'd like to introduce Ron Cavallieri with AECOM Engineering, who will provide a short PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for the introduction. Mayor, City Council members, thank you very much for being able to present this, the annual report to you this morning. The, you know, as the annual report was prepared in compliance with Section 5.18 of the city's bond resolution. And the report was also, a report was compared in accordance with the city's vision and mission for services to its customers. The, there were several criteria that the annual report addressed for the Cape Coral Utility System. It met operations and maintenance obligations through established rates. It performed, disposition of revenues is in accordance with bond covenants. And, you know, planned capital improvements to meet anticipated future service needs and revenue necessary for such purpose. And so it satisfied all of the criteria in accordance with the city's bond covenant. The Utilities Administration is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the public utilities in the city of Cape Coral. And, you know, its mission is to improve delivery of cost-effective water and irrigation quality, water and wastewater collection services by empowering employees to responsibly meet customer expectations for quality value, safety, reliability, and environmental responsibility. You know, one of the things I'll point out about the annual report that we did for fiscal year 2021, Hurricane Ian came after the end of the fiscal year and so is not addressed in this year's annual report, but will be addressed in next year's report. The annual report does address service area expansions within Cape Coral, you know, the UEP service areas. And the prioritization of the UEPs was planned as part of the 2020 Comprehensive Utilities Master Plan Update. And I do believe the next UEP area that is scheduled to come online would be for North 3. The city has an extensive existum, an extensive existing infrastructure system. And I'll just hit some of the highlights here. The potable water system, there's 52 operational raw water supply wells and, you know, two water treatment plants, the North RO plant and the Southwest RO plant. The sewer system has over 763 miles of gravity sewers. There's two water reclamation facilities, the Everest Water Reclamation Facility and Southwest Water Reclamation Facility. You know, as part of our completion of the annual report, site inspections of the city's treatment facilities, you know, indicated the facilities are in very good operating condition. And the IQ water system, of course, all of the, the city's IQ water system comes from, you know, surface water from the six canal pump stations and from the Everest and Southwest Water Reclamation Facilities. The major components of the potable water system include the raw water supply, raw water transmission, water production facilities, water distribution system, and water storage facilities and booster pump stations. The city has ongoing maintenance programs associated to potable water system and, you know, numerous accomplishments and goals that are outlined in the annual report. The sewer system is comprised of the gravity sewer network, force main network, wastewater lift stations, the water reclamation facilities, and F1 disposal system. Again, you know, the city has ongoing maintenance programs and several accomplishments and goals that are outlined in the annual report. And, you know, one of the things I, you know, that the city really can be proud of is highlighted here. The Florida Water Environment Association has the Earl B. Phelps Award for Outstanding Service. And the city and the Everest and the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility received first place for three years in a row, 2020, 21, and 2022, which, to my knowledge, has never been accomplished before. Three years in a row for first place outstanding service for a, for a large water reclamation facility. And the city can be really proud of that accomplishment. The IQ water system, you know, components consist of a source water supply, canal withdrawal facilities, the IQ water storage and pumping facilities, and IQ water distribution system. Again, ongoing maintenance program and, you know, several accomplishments and goals that are outlined in the annual report. And I think another really outstanding achievement for the utility system is their certificate of recognition for a Water Resource Utility of the Future Award, which was awarded by the Water Environment Federation. The annual report considers projected demands and flows in the utility system. And, you know, as highlighted in these charts, the demands and flows are growing for the potable water system. The 2012 annual average daily demand was about 9.5 MGD, and that's grown to about 12.6 MGD in 2021. The sewer system, the 2012 annual average daily flow was about 13.3 MGD. And that has grown to about 14.8 MGD in 2021. And then for the IQ water system, the demands have grown from about 28 MGD in 2012 to 2021, to 30.8 MGD in 2021. The annual report also considers capital improvement projects that have been identified by the city. And the CIP budget for, through fiscal year 2027 is approaching $1 billion with a B, 909 million. And there are, you know, several major capital improvement projects that the city is planning to undertake. I know one, for example, is the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility. That facility will be expanded to 20 MGD, I think, by the year 2025. The annual report also included a financial review. And again, and Jeff talked about that earlier. There, you know, there are several criteria that are used for evaluation of the city's utility system. You know, they should have revenues equal to the costs of the services provided. And it should have, should establish rates sufficient to cover the cost of operating, maintaining, repairing, and financing the system. And so I'm very happy to report that the, that the utility system satisfied all of those financial criteria that are required in accordance with the city's bond covenant. And so in summary, the, the city's utility system is in excellent condition. It's well managed, and it satisfies all of the requirements for the city's bond covenant. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the update. Do we have any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great day.
All right, you too.
And you all should have a copy of the.
Yep, we got that, I think, the last day or two. Set it on our desk.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else on that topic, right, Mr. City Manager?
No, that's correct.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Cape Coral 311 app demo.
Good morning, City Council. Melissa Mickey again with the Communications Department, or Office. Sorry, I'm the Communications Manager. And I'm going to be presenting a little bit this morning on our 311 app. Give you a little overview on it. So why an app? One really great reason to have a city app is to give us the ability to send instant, non-intrusive notifications to users. Those are those push notifications you guys are probably familiar with. Also, mobile apps have the advantage of utilizing features of a mobile device like a camera, your contact list, and GPS. When used within an app, these features can make the user experience interactive and fun. These features can also reduce efforts users would have to make otherwise. So for example, users completing a form to report an issue or this past weekend submit their trash bag locations. They might need to submit photos to complete the process. And that app enables users to use their app camera, use their mobile camera to capture and submit photographs. And the interrelated features shorten the time taken to perform a particular task within the app. Our website is available using your mobile device. However, there are differences between a website and an app. Probably the most fundamental difference between the mobile website and an app are that, like a website, apps often require internet connectivity to perform most tasks, but there is a difference. An app can still offer basic content and functionality to users in an offline mode, whereas the website cannot. With all the technological advancements in web design, mobile websites still rely on browsers to perform even the most elementary functions. And they rely on browser features like the back button or the refresh button. Our mobile app doesn't have those restrictions, so you can use advanced gestures like tapping and swiping to get different information and move through the app. Users spend a lot of time on their mobile devices, and many users encounter apps that they've installed on their devices every day or close to that. So this regular encounter acts as a branding opportunity for apps. So even when users are not actively using our mobile app, they are reminded of the brand of Cape Coral associated with the app because the app icon acts like a mini advertisement for our brand. A mobile app also often performs actions much quicker than a mobile website and to store their data locally on mobile devices, unlike websites that use web servers. And this means faster data retrieval in the app. So what does it do? You can report an issue within the app. And if you go into reporting an issue, you can report issues on, to Lee County Animal Services. You can report community and miscellaneous questions, permitting questions, code compliance questions, planning and zoning, Lee County mosquito control, and many more. There's also, you're also able to access information on mayor and city council. So we have all of your pictures in there. There's a phone number. There's your email. There's news information there. So if you click on the news icon within the app, it takes you to our website with a list of all of our press releases. The city offices are there, so it can connect you to City Hall. There's a contractor portal that'll take you to enter gov. You can also pay your water bill. And it gives you some information on some of the Cape Coral attractions, as well as a public meeting calendar. So if all of that makes you really want the app, here's a really quick video on how to find it and download it. Thank you.
Could you send all of us that video as well?
Of course, yes, happy to. Oh, sorry. Oh, my goodness gracious.
Is that the updated version?
Apparently. Oh, my gosh. So really, that's the, that's the bulk of the information on the app. It's just like you would download any other app. And our marketing for the app, we will include targeted email blasts. We have about 60,000 emails, so we will, we will market it in that way. We're going to advertise it regularly throughout the year in our e-newsletter with articles and what I call ads, but they're graphics that our team will create. We'll create a flyer for public distribution. We have created a webpage where we will, I think that video is already there. I think I put it there yesterday, but we'll make sure that the video on how that, that you just saw is there and available. And we will advertise on the city electronics sign as well, as well as the Lamar boards. And we'll promote it on social media. And we'll have that video on social media, too, so that you're able to share that out that way as well. And we'll send out a press release annually on the app. There are some additional marketing techniques that we're going to use that do have a moderate cost to them, such as the peach jar flyer distribution. That is actually something that goes to all of the Lee County parents at all of the schools. So we can, we can specifically target the Cape Coral schools and send that information to them. We'll boost some Facebook posts and, of course, the flyer distribution, which I mentioned, but that does have a cost to it. Some of the other ones have, like I said, little or no cost. And then also, we have, I don't know what, why I put BC add to distribution. I have my own, I made my own acronym, and I don't know what I meant that for, so maybe it'll come to me. And then higher cost is postcard distribution, which going to all the residents, and then a TV commercial, which we like to use those, too. And that's it. Are there any questions?
I just have one quick question. First off, I think it's a great tool. So I want to thank staff for, in your department, for getting that together. Is there any way we could use this for hurricane updates? That's the first thing that come to mind. You know, I think that this could be a great tool as well on our tool belt when it comes to hurricane messaging. And maybe that's something that we can take a look at if it's not on air, how we could implement that.
Definitely. It is something that we are looking into. So we're working with IT. They've actually done a lot of the heavy lifting for the app previously. We will help market it, and then we're getting, we're working with them to give access to us so that we are able to send out push notifications, which would be definitely something that I would want to use and a good reason to encourage our residents to sign up for it so that during a hurricane or any other citywide emergency situation, we could send out information to people.
Any other questions, council member comments?
Just kind of going over what you said, Mayor. I was thinking of that, too, for the weather alerts. Because I know that now tornadoes are getting pretty active around Florida, which was weird. Years ago, I never thought Florida would have tornadoes. So just, would that be difficult for you to add alerts in there? If we are having a tropical storm coming in, high winds, hailstorm, tornadoes, whatever the weather disaster could be? If you download that app with 311, could it do a notification?
What we'll do is we'll get with our IT department, and they'll look to see if embedded within the software that runs the app, if there is an alert function. And then if somebody allows notification, if there is an alert function or a notification function and someone allows it, then we can do that. But we'll, we'll look into that capability and then report back.
Yeah, I think that'd be awesome. Other than that, I think it's great. I mean, I think, I think you guys had a really good job, and you worked on that pretty quickly, too. I mean.
Yes, I don't want to take credit.
How could you guys get that put together? Mike, I mean, what, like a couple of weeks? Pretty impressive. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing that out there. And I think that'd be a huge asset to the community at large, you know, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, item five is roundtable discussions. First, any city council members have any roundtable items they'd like to discuss? Or Mr. City Manager, you got anything that you want to?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is just make sure we moved on from the first item into the subsequent ones without a clear direction if we're going to move that item to an introduction. So there was discussion, but we never really got that. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just get a clear direction.
Why don't we start with Councilmember Cosden, and we'll move down the line.
For which issue, the irrigation?
The irrigation.
Yeah, I support it.
I'd support it.
I'll move it forward for a discussion.
Yes.
For discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items, Mr. City Manager?
I have none. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Deputy City Attorney, do you have any items?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, then. Time and place of the future meeting. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, May the 3rd, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?